Good evening, I call the January 25th, 2022 Select Board to order. First item on the agenda is Executive Session under Exceptions Three and Six. And I'm going to look for a motion to go into Executive Session. First, under Exception Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and I do so declare. And under Exception Six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. The Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body, and I do so declare. Is there such a motion?
There is such a motion.
Not towards...
No, no, we will return.
You're correct.
Prior to adjournment, and in fact, that open session will begin at six o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. We need to go roll call on this to go into Executive Session. Members of the board, we have three currently. Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Keane?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. It passes unanimously.
Yes. Yeah, but could we get the lights while they're out?
All right.
Um, can we get the audio of the light while we're out there?
Absolutely.
The process that you had that...
Oh, thank you.
No, it doesn't. Thank you.
Yes.
That's interesting. Uh...
Yeah.
Okay. 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 Okay.
Good evening. We return now to the meeting, January 25th, 2022, meeting of the Select Board. We have two citizens who wish to come to address the board. That is now allowed under our public comment period policy. Each resident will be allowed three minutes to speak. We have a timer here so that people are aware when their time is up. It'll be uninterrupted three minutes unless someone is deemed to be out of order. And the first resident that we have, Ms. Marages, Dedham Ave, Susan Marages, yes, please approach. You can come right here. It's much better to, yes, thank you. Yep, so we can hear you. Great, welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. I wanted to discuss the sign that was placed in front of my house in early November. Susan Marages, and I live at 179 Dedham Ave.
Yes, continue.
I've lived at this address actually for 29 years, and in early November, two street signs were placed in front of my house, literally demarking with property lines for no parking. It was done without my knowledge or without me being aware of this happening at all and without any explanation. I then tried to figure out what was going on and managed to get to the Public Works Department. And I spoke to Charis Bostig, who then put me in touch with T-MAC. I then found out through T-MAC that my neighbor, who we unfortunately do not have a good relationship with, had made a complaint about cars parking in front of the house, and that it is a danger to him and his family leaving the driveway. So we share this driveway, and unfortunately, it's been a little bit contentious, and I don't want to get into all of the details in public. But I think that this is what has precipitated him coming to the board. And I did ask Kristin to please forward you or have you look at the T-MAC meeting so that you could see what happened. And it's obvious, he parks in front of the house himself, has for the 24 years that he's lived at this residence, and parked his cars there before he made the complaint to the T-MAC committee, after he made the complaint. And actually, I have pictures which I know forwarded to you on the actual day that he, that T-MAC signed. This, his cars will park right where he says it's a danger for us to park. We have, I would say because of the issue with our driveway, we have limited parking. And I would never have purchased a home with a common driveway without having the ability to have my visitors and guests park in front of my house. I have an elderly mother-in-law who visits me and needs to park in front. I have a handicapped brother-in-law who comes to visit, who also needs to park there, as well as just having regular landscapers or anybody else park in front of the house. We've had this ability to do this for 29 years, and it was just taken away without any explanation. So I'm here to ask you to please take the signs down.
Thank you. We will take that under advisement. We'll discuss with the town manager. We received your information, where were the issue, and we will get back to you. Okay, thank you. Yeah, you have 30 seconds.
I just wanted to add that I know that there have been issues with saying that it may be a public safety issue and that there, you know, you're not allowed to park on the berm during the T-MAC meeting that I listened to. I actually heard T-MAC encourage people to park on a berm on certain areas of streets. Highland, I think it was Highland Street in particular, Highland Terrace. And I also heard that they, there are streets where people park in the road to prevent traffic from doing, being too fast. So, you know, we don't want to park in the street. We don't want to block traffic. We want everybody to be safe, and we've never had an issue leaving our driveway in the 29 years that I know of that I've lived there.
Okay, thank you for that. Understood. Okay, next resident wishes to address the board, Shirley Pelagi. Approach. How are you? The floor is yours.
Thank you. So if I may, I would like to read a letter to you. I had an independent appraisal of my home. Matt is aware that some months ago I contacted him, and I was instructed to have a, apply for an abatement. That's actually one part of the steps. The second step is you have to start out with a corrective field card. And it appears that my field card from 2002, when I purchased the home, shows one level. And if you measure the interior at 762 feet and the exterior is measured, the way the appraisers do per state code, the exterior measurement is a little over 800 square feet. So I did have the town assessor come out back in June, and he added a detached garage, semi-finished basement, and another bedroom. And in my new field card, it lists four bedrooms. There are none. So I'm going to take a moment, and I'll leave a copy of this with you, Matt, so that you can have it. And I know that you're, you know, very knowledgeable about these issues. First and foremost, the company from Newton came out several days ago, and the subject's property living area has been measured with gross living area to be calculated at interior 762 square feet and exterior measurement 882. The appraiser also notes that the second floor of the subject home is unheated and therefore not included in GLA. Also noted is the new public record lists the subject as having a one-car detached garage. There is no garage in this home. And there is a storage bay in the basement level at the rear of the subject's property. The access is limited because there's a deck behind it. So this is the assessment, and she also did a blueprint of my one-story home, and it matches exactly what field card one is. And so I've already checked with the Mass Association of Assessors, there's a new president there, Melissa Couture, out in South Hadley, and she verified, in fact, it's, you need, there are two pieces. Your field card needs to be accurate, and then you apply for an abatement. So I want you to have a copy of this, Matt, and then we'll discuss this further.
That sounds fine. That's perfect. If you'd please handle what you have to the town manager, distribute it, and then we'll, we'll follow up with you.
Great, thanks, Matt.
You as well. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Introduce care of graves for veterans and coordinator of ceremonies. Mr. Kravitz, if you have any attendance, please approach. Welcome. Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm so excited to introduce Jay Kravitz as our new Care of Graves for Veterans and Coordinator of Ceremonies. I always have to look up the title. We know the folks we've had who've done it in the past have done a little bit of everything, but that's the actual title. As you know, our friend Bill Topham had done this job for many years and recently retired, and we have, the board has thanked him at our meeting. And so we reached out and had a wide nationwide search, and we came up with Jay on the, on the recommendation of our folks from the VFW, who are also here in the photography room. So that's exciting. Jay is currently Lieutenant Commander in the Coast Guard and also Special Agent for Department of Veterans Affairs. He is got an MPA and a Master's in Criminal Justice from Suffolk University. He's very involved with the VFW. He has two amazing boys, Zach and Quinn, who are here. I think he spends a lot of time with, and this is for his free time. And I've met Jay only And I've met Jay only three times, but I know a lot about his woodworking hobby. And so I will say, Jay, I went to Valenti's to try to find a cutting board to buy, and they were all out. So I hope you, I hope you make some more for us, because we're all going to be going looking. So I'm just so happy to introduce Jay Kravitz to the board, and if you have any questions or if Jay would like to say hello.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I'm honored to take on this role. I'm very excited to be kind of embedded even more in this community. I'm especially appreciative to give back in another way to the veteran population, which, as we all know, is a, it can be a very vulnerable population that we need to take very good care of. And my boys who are here know that that's a very important thing to me. It's also because of that, an important thing to them, and they are also appreciative that I'm standing before you, taking this positions. Thank you for having me.
Jason, thank you for applying, and thank you for, I know you before this from flag football as a heck of a coach. I didn't see that on your resume. But you should brag about that. And your children should be very proud of you to step up with your experience and your dedication. And in the interview, talking about how, what you're going to bring to the town, I think is remarkable. So thank you very much. And I see Tom Keating here. I see Matt Chang, who was spoke highly of your praises. So all great stuff. It's nice to see. Members of the board, Dan.
I want to welcome you to the town team. This is a position that's not very visible to many residents, but it is very important to the veterans and their families. And it's part of, and it's, I think we've only had maybe two or three veterans agents during all the time that I've been on the sport, and that's been a while. So it's, it's, it's something that is great. And your resume, your background, everything, and and the recommendations, everything we know about you. So it's great to have you in this role and we look forward to being an account on you. And if anything that you need from the board, be sure to, you know, we have a chain of command here too, but we're all here too. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further comments? Kevin.
Thank you.
And the floor is, that's a big deal. Thank you.
Great. Thank you again. Have a great evening. I know we'll see you around. Next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing for removal of one public shade tree at 341 Naughton Street. And I see our Parks and Forestry Superintendent, Mr. Olson, is here. Good evening, Mr. Olson.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Congratulations, Kevin.
So you're here on this application. The floor is yours to describe the tree and why you think the removal is necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As mentioned, I'm here before you tonight for the matter of a public shade tree hearing. If I could just take the liberty for just a minute to give a background, especially for our new board member. I do believe Marcus was out a tree hearing last year when we reformatted the board, so I think he's from the, but for Kevin's sake, a little history might be in order. Public shade trees are street trees, as we affectionately call them, and need them berm trees, so trees that are within the public layout of the roadway. When a public shade tree is planted, it's protected by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87, Section 7. Residents can request to remove a public shade tree, and they need to do so in writing. Upon writing an email or a letter to our Parks and Forestry Division, we'll go and inspect the tree and give feedback to the resident as to if it qualifies and if it will come to before the board for further investigation. We don't have many public shade tree hearings. I've been with the town now this 11 years, my 12th year, and historically, we've had about one shade tree hearing a year. So just wanted to give a little framework as to how often we have these matters before the town. This matter in particular, as the board has seen from the agenda packet, is a street tree located on the Hoyden Street. Court Johnson is a new resident to town. He and I spoke back in November, approximately two months ago. He called and had some concerns about the tree. Court bought the house a few months ago, has decided to make Needham his home, has a young family, and really wants to make this a home for the ages. And he had some concerns about the street tree. So we talked, and then we talked again after we investigated, and we told Court that for a healthy tree, per Massachusetts law, it has to go to the board for a vote as rule of thumb. So we did look at the tree, and you see in the agenda packet, there's many reasons why I support this hearing request and removal request, many different reasons why. The thing, I want to back up one more time. So Court talked about the home, how happy he was to be in this community, to be, have his family here, and really that he wanted, this was his dream house. And unlike other people, he was very offering. He wanted to work with us. He wanted to pay for the tree to come down. He wanted to plant new trees. So all things that we like to hear, because obviously, none of us want to take down public shade trees. So that was kind of music to my ears. So when my team and I went out to investigate the tree, take some pictures for the packet and do a, do a risk assessment, we met several neighbors that came out and asked us what we were doing. And we told them that Court had requested us to take a look at the tree, and almost everybody unanimously said, wow, what a great new neighbor. We always see him out doing yard work. We really know he's vested, and we tend to agree. It's not the best-looking tree. So to the tree hearing matter at hand, when we looked at the tree, we found that it was a Norway maple. It is approximately 30 years old. And it's really a prime example of what we call in the arbor care business as a wrong tree, wrong location. As you can see, the tree is a large shade tree, and it was planted under the electrical grid, the distribution lines, and that is really a no-no. We have framework now where we only plant flowering or fruiting trees under, under electric lines because of the exact reasons that you can see before you tonight. Large shade trees will grow in direct contact, and what happens is EverSource, because they need reliability and safety to their lines, they prune the tree out. So you can see that half the tree's canopy is actually missing. If you can envision no power lines there, that Norway maple would be a beautiful tree to have a false, full canopy, a full crown. Unfortunately, it's been topped repeatedly because of the distribution line contact proximity. And what's happened is made competing leads. So it now has about five different competing leads, which lead to weak unions, bad branching, and really exacerbates the fact that this is not a prized specimen. We've talked about this with the board in past years, that Norway maples are considered invasive tree species in Massachusetts. We no longer plant them as a rule of thumb for many different reasons. Lastly, you could see, and maybe if you've all taken a look at the tree in question, I know that Matt lives right around the corner, so I hope that you took a look. But you can see that this tree has been struck by vehicular traffic. As most of us know, that have driven to Hoyden Street, it's a very tight, narrow road, particularly as you get to the mobile station at the intersection. You can see right on the trunk of the tree, a chest high, that it's been struck by, repeatedly by vehicular traffic. It, you know, it resonates when you drive the road, but it really resonates when you have a plow truck in a snowstorm and you realize how close that large shade tree is to the, to the roadway. So for many different reasons, we have asked for the board to to please approve this hearing upon those reasons, and I'd answer any questions from the board.
Thank you for that summary, Mr. Olson. I do note in the agenda fact sheet that it's also recommended a donation amount of $500 by Mr. Johnson to cover the purchase, two trees to replace the loss of this one tree. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I do believe Mr. Johnson may be available.
Great.
If you'd like him.
Thank you. And I do see you're on Zoom, Mr. Johnson. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes. Would anything you would like to add to what Mr. Olson said, and also comment on the donation amount?
I, I, Mr. Olson did a great job summarizing everything. Like he said, we just moved to town from the city of Boston. We have two really young kids. You know, we plan to be here for a long time. And in the event that, like, like he said, we're incredibly happy and willing to work with the town, and the donation seems perfectly acceptable. So whatever we can do to improve the, the street and just make it a more appealing tree for that location, we'd love to work with you guys to do that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and thanks for being so forthright. And it seems like you really love Needham, and you just moved here, so that's always great to see.
We do. It's great, great. We love being in Needham Center too.
Great. It gets better. It gets better. Great. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here live that wishes to comment on this removal? Sir, if you just approach, yes? Is that microphone working? Yes. Right? Is there just your name and address for the record, please? We can.
I, I can't hear.
Okay.
All right, let's try that. Okay, as I was saying, I I have no objection with removing the tree, but I'd like the select board to really consider a more holistic solution that doesn't just address problems one at a time as they occur. So EverSource spends tens of millions of dollars every year on what they call vegetation management. It's probably more aptly described as tree disfigurement, like we see here. And even so, when there are storms, 90% of power outages are caused by trees. Simply put, we need to move all of our overhead electrical lines underground. Bearing these power lines will provide reliable power distribution to future generations while still allowing healthy and beautiful foliage in our town. Even small changes can make a really big difference. If you take a look at our neighbor of Wellesley next door, you can see a lot fewer wires. They don't allow new or upgraded electrical service to be done overhead. It must be done underground. So even little changes like that over time can really make a big difference in incrementally improving our distribution infrastructure. So I thank you for your time and consideration.
Great. Thank you for those comments in the four corners of the tree discussion, but thank you. Is there anyone online who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing and hearing none, we'll go with a motion, and I hope the motion includes the $500 to the town. Is there such a motion? Yes, Mary Ann?
I'm pleased that the board vote to approve and sign the public shade tree hearing form for the removal of one 24-inch Norway maple tree in the front berm of 341 Naughton Street, and to accept, require a donation in the amount of $500 to cover the expense of purchasing two trees to replace the loss of this one tree.
Thank you, Ms. Cooley. Is there a second discussion? Mr. Matthews.
A couple of questions. What, what kind of trees are you thinking of?
Sure. So, you know, for flowering trees, we have kind of our standard lineup, Japanese tree lilac, flowering crab apple, kusa dogwood, red bud. Forgive me, Mr. Matthews, I'm forgetting a couple, but.
And are you thinking of putting these on the berm or some other?
So that's a good question. You know, we always try to replace in the berm, but knowing this location, I think we really got to look carefully. I know that Court wants a tree back in this space, something beautiful that he can look at. But when I look at his property, and this is kind of putting you on the spot, Court, but I'd love to get something a little bit back off the sidewalk, and I think it could set up well. So I'd like to do a little bit of both to answer the question, if possible.
So maybe, I mean, I don't think you have to sit here and decide this in a binding way here. It is a narrow street, and the berm is, you know, the trees in the berm can be, to some extent, really, the evidence shows that you can, that this, that can be, we don't know exactly whose fault it is, but it would be better if there was a little more space there. And and whatever, but if it's not on the berm, it definitely has to be to the satisfaction, both the satisfaction and the agreement of the homeowner, but meet the town's requirements. And I think my own experience with Naughton Street, it carries a lot more traffic than a lot of people think. And to have a little space away from the road before you get to the trees is good, even a bit of foot or two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr. King.
Thank you for the explanation. It's very helpful. And I want, just want to say that David's point about a more holistic point about slowly burying power lines would be a great direction to go in for moving forward. And just a plug for a basswood tree or a linnit tree. But they're the same thing.
Thank you for that. And yes, the comments have been received by the board, so thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing, hearing none, we come to the vote. Dan? Mary Ann? Kevin? Marcus?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That is unanimous. Motion passes. Mr. Olson, thank you for coming in. And again, welcome to Needham, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Nice to meet you guys.
Thank you.
There's a, there are motion to move the appointments and consent? There's second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
The chair votes yes. That is unanimous. Next item on the agenda, public hearing, EverSource granted location, 58 Taylor Street. I will note that this is underground service as previously discussed. Ms. Calendar, you are coming to us via Zoom.
Good evening.
Good evening. I hope you're pulled. Are you in a car?
I am, and I'm.
Okay, you're pulled over safe.
I am parked, yeah.
Great. Nice to, nice to see you again. You are here on this application. The floor is yours.
Thank you. So as a representative of EverSource, we're here seeking a grant of location to install approximately 10 feet of conduit into Taylor Street, and this is to provide underground service to 58 Taylor Street. And I'm glad to answer any questions that anyone might have at this time.
Thank you so much. Kate, everything is in order?
Everything's fine.
No work was performed prior? Great, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this application? Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak? Yes. Okay. We'll bring you over.
Hello?
Ms. Shapiro, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. I assume you can hear me as well. I did speak with this afternoon.
Ms. Shapiro, if you could just say your name and address for the record, and then you may proceed.
Karen Shapiro, 48 Taylor Street. I am adjacent to the property being discussed. And I'm also a town meeting member for Precinct A. So I did speak this afternoon regarding this. We, we, thank you for talking to me this afternoon. My concern is this street and this sidewalk were just completely repaved a few months ago in the summer. The entire street and sidewalk were repaved. And I'm concerned, you know, this was to make it smoother for walking, for the snowplows, for the kids who get to school at the Elliott School. And this is, you know, unless they repave the whole sidewalk, it's going to make a mess of the sidewalk. I know that they'll fill it in, but it's, you know, we've had, and I personally have had noise and mud because of this. And I don't see why it is so necessary to have this, to have the ground dug up on this occasion. There's plenty of electricity to that house. It was a smaller house before. Now it's a big house. The workers have been using power tools, so clearly there's enough electricity. And so I'm concerned about the damage to the sidewalk for the neighborhood. That, that's, that's my biggest concern. And if they could address that, please.
Thank you for those comments, and I can't speak to this particular project, but typically, prior houses had overhead service, and therefore they come to this board in order to install underground service. Most likely, the workers are using a temporary service on the property. Most likely, the workers are using a temporary service on the property. But again, I cannot speak to this exact project. That is just what's typical. Kate, if I may turn to you, is the DPW, is there a moratorium on that street? Where where do we stand on the sidewalk?
The DPW did sign off on it. I will say that the they will require that any construction leave the sidewalk and the street in the same condition as it was before, and we will go back and monitor it and make sure that it even after the after a waiting period to make sure that it's brought back to the same condition.
Okay, great. So it will be restored in the same condition as it was prior to this development. And that is the answer on that. Mr. King?
More than a patch? Or is it like a re?
It will be the discretion of the town engineer, but it would have to bring it in. If it was just done, it would likely be more work than than just if the sidewalk was older.
Okay. Mary Ann?
And Kate, it's also fair to say that that they may be coming back in the spring after we're through and the ground has settled and blah blah to actually take a look and assess whether it is in fact patched to our satisfaction.
Absolutely.
Great. So Ms. Shapiro, we will have the DPW take note of that and as required, put it back in the condition that it was prior to this excavation.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You, too. And thank you all. I'm sorry. Thank you all for your work for all these meetings. It's it's very appreciated.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for being a town meeting member. I know that has its own challenges. Thank you. Are there any other attendees who wish to speak on this application? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close a public hearing portion. Is there a motion? Yes.
It printed the agenda fact sheet, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan? Mary Ann?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Thank you again, Ms. Calendar. Have a great evening.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Drive safely.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item on the agenda, A B C C change of LLC manager. Needham Food and Beverage LLC, doing business as the Heights. Attorney Hughes, please approach. How are you this evening?
Well, thank you.
I'm doing well, thank you. So you're here on a change of manager. We have the information in our agenda packet, but I will turn the floor over to you to discuss this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow members of the board, Ms. Ms. Patrick. Good evening. I represent the petitioner, Needham Food and Beverage LLC, which runs the bar known as The Heights, which is contained in the Homewood Suites over on First Avenue. Before the board signed, it's a change of manager for the limited liability company that controls the license. The previous manager was Mr. Elias Petuchas, who worked for many years for this company and for many more for the parent corporation, what we call the Claremont Family of Companies. And he's he's he left the company late last year to pursue his own endeavors. And the LLC needs to appoint a new manager. At this point, the LLC seeks to appoint Mr. Patrick Carney Jr., who is actually the son of the founder of the Claremont Family of Companies, and it's longtime advisor, Mr. Francis Xavier Lynch, who's an attorney down in Palm Beach, Florida. There will be no change in operations whatsoever. The LLC manager is not the liquor license manager. Their liquor license manager works out of the hotel and is Ms. Ms. Jennifer Hartley, who is the hotel manager as well. This is a ministerial position primarily. They make sure the LLC manager makes sure that the company is in good standing with the Secretary of the Commonwealth, helps deal with tax filings and that kind of matter. Nothing on the ground will be affected whatsoever. And for that reason, we'd ask that the board approve this motion. Session.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Hughes. Discussion from the board.
If the LLC law was changed to have a different category so that we didn't have to risk confusion about, because from the licensing point of view, it's the onsite manager that's the person that we most interface with, and that does not change.
Exactly.
You're not in charge of writing the law, Counselor, so no, this is satisfactory to me. I'd move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Is there a second? Discussion? Yes, Ms. Cooley.
I was just going to want to check with the town manager to be sure that everything was in order from the town's perspective.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We come to the vote. Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.
I know it's been difficult for the business, so we wish the best of luck moving forward.
Doing their best.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, town manager, FY twenty twenty-three budget presentation. This was better.
Making sure that everybody is watching this on cable and Zoom will be able to see what you're seeing. We have the best minds on this. We'll be there in a minute.
I'm not over that, Kate.
No. Go with that? Okay, we're gonna go with what we have in the interest of time.
Kristen, thank you.
Get me to it. Wouldn't have been able to do it this far. So I'm pleased to present to the board the balanced budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. We're a little bit challenged here technologically, but I think people will be able to to see it. And thank Miles and Kristen and Cindy for their work on the the budget. Dave, obviously, on the putting together all the numbers and Cindy for the PowerPoint that we're seeing this evening. So we're moving forward. As the board knows, in December, you voted a set of budget priorities that you can see here if you have glasses on, but these are a large number of priorities that we're working on. And we, as we have told you in the past, we really rely on these priorities when we're looking at making recommendations for the capital plan and for the operating budget. And that is particularly true when we're having to make difficult choices between items that departments or the school committee have put forward. So the budget priorities are guiding the work that we're seeing here. So in brief, these are the numbers that you'll see in the budget book that we will be producing this week. You can see that the the sources of revenue, our property tax continues to be strong, have recommended four point nine percent increase. The sources, I'm sorry, at four point nine percent increases. And we are following and we'll see in a future slide the state aid as presented by the governor and the lieutenant governor. A note on the free cash recommendation, we are including a recommendation for twelve million dollars in free cash. We do expect that we will have more free cash than that for the year, and we have a recommendation for you later on in the presentation on where we believe the excess free cash that's not supporting the operating budget and the warrant articles could go. And I I would also note that our local receipts category, you can see there is, we're starting to come back from the lower budget recommendations that we had to use for projections after the difficult years of the early pandemic. This is a slide that we return to year over year because it it gives us a good sense of how the various revenue sources are trending. They're trending about the way they do always trend. You know, we we had for many years been seeing an increase in the property tax as a percent of the revenue available for appropriation, and it really has stabilized in the last few years of very consistent sources of revenue for our projects. So here you see the state aid estimate that is based on what we heard from the lieutenant governor and the governor at the MMA over the weekend. We're estimating as the as was projected, a two point seven percent increase for both the Chapter Seventy school aid and the unrestricted general government aid. Those are the estimates. You can see there and you'll have in your budget book for your reference the the prior years. There, you've probably read and heard municipal folks hearing that Commonwealth receipts are significantly higher than two point seven percent, whether there should be additional state aid provided. And we may see addition of state aid when the legislature makes its final budget recommendations. As is typically the case, these are the the budget drivers that we see on a regular basis. Employee benefits does represent a significant cost to in the in our time wide expense line. When we add employees as we are recommending in this budget and as we have in the past few years, there is always an increase in the expense related to employee benefits, and it's been something that we have done every year is to make sure that the board, the finance committee, school committee, and everybody involved, including town meeting, understand what those costs are so they can make informed choices. This particular year, the the rates for our employee health insurance are moderating. We actually have a situation where we have a number of employees in the Fallon Health Plan, which Fallon has made a decision to leave the municipal market and is no longer offering health insurance. So we are down to a Blue Cross Blue Shield, Harvard, and Tufts model, and you may know Harvard and Tufts will be combining in FY twenty-five. So the world of health insurance is changing. This is a significant number in the planning, and so we pay a lot of attention to the trends and making sure we can get the best rates possible. We do continue to participate in the West Bourbon Health Group, and we have been very satisfied with how that's been working. Interestingly, school enrollment has been our greatest driver over the past decade, and we actually had two years of production, and this year it's ticked up by less than one percent. These changes are likely to be pandemic related, and I think it's not clear to anyone at this point whether that enrollment will come back. There are, as as you know, the Future School Needs Committee and the School Committee have been talking about slowing elementary enrollment that's possible, and we'll have more information on that. But in in sheer numbers, we are down. The superintendent will be presenting his budget for hearing with the school committee, but he is very concerned about the impact of the on the students of the pandemic, and we expect that that impact to continue for several years. Finally, every time there's increases in staffing that that does tend to be a very significant part of our budget. We are as judicious as possible, but there are many needs, and as we talked about in the budget priorities, they the town has consistently held back in adding staff, and we have a couple of items that we will be recommending to you for this budget cycle. So with respect to the performance budget for FY twenty-three, these are the items that we refer to as performance budget, but they're additions to the operating budgets of the town departments. Excuse me. And these are in three buckets and in priority order in the bucket. So you see at the top on the right, the select board's goals that are based basically broken down into seven categories that we've given labels to. And in the yellow bucket, those are increases in headcount and in priority order, we are recommending the the addition of an application administrator to provide redundancy and support in our information technology center. An HVAC supervisor, I'm sure you've heard me talk, and the superintendent talk about HVAC since the advent of the pandemic, we very much with the sophisticated systems that we have. But he is very much interested in having additional supervisory level of staff who are available to oversee and troubleshoot those in addition to the director of building maintenance. The civil engineer is partnered with special equipment that the civil engineer would need. It's not a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar civil engineer. Really mindful of the incredible increase in workload that has been put on the engineering division. We have a lot of projects in the works. We have a lot of mandates on us, and we have a lot of outside projects that people probably don't realize how much an outside development really impacts the engineering department that works with every developer. And the larger projects take up an awful lot of time. The Director of Public Works was here talking to the board about the labor three position. This is one in highway that would support both the highway crews and also the snowplow program. The outdoor facility specialist is a placeholder title. I guarantee you that it will not be called that when we finally fix it. Another word that we've been talking about is park ranger. This is a position that would work in park and recreation and would spend the entire time going to our parks and our open spaces, making sure that they're in working order, clean, that there if there are trash issues that they be resolved, but making sure that the facilities are safe. The public, as you know, is very much interested in using our open spaces, and we want to make sure that they're as up to date as possible. The Park and Recreation Department and Commission did ask for two positions, and we're recommending one at this time. We can see how what the workload is and and report back to you. And then the employee benefits associated with these items on this page and the school department's recommendations is a six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar item. In the blue box, we're looking at services. So in our opinion, the the priority order of adding FTEs and adding some services, which is a very different kind of expenditure, we're not this apples to apples comparison. So we put this additional category here. So the clinical support services, which is in law enforcement, is the social worker that's embedded in the department that you've heard about on a number of occasions from the chief that was funded through a warrant article for FY twenty-two, and we recommend that it be absorbed into the budget. And the fire department is looking for enhanced fire records management software that will help them manage a lot of the day to day processing that they have in in that public safety effort. And finally, the we began the budget process, and there was a transition in the leadership of the library. And what Kim Hewitt, our library director, has done has reorganized some of the expenses that she has and is able to absorb the overdrive subscription, which has been on the this performance budget list for many years. So she's been able to lower the amount and absorb part of it, and so we do recommend that very important service, which, if you've been following our social media, has been exceptionally popular during the last couple of years. And the final category is in our orange bucket, and this is not additions to headcount, but additions to either part-time staff or additional hours. We're looking for, we have additional buildings coming online and have been factoring in additional overtime hours for those new facilities. That's custodial services. We have a zoning specialist who's a person who supports the the ZBA and all of their work. And at twenty-five hours, just really wasn't able to keep up, so we're recommending an increase to thirty hours a week for that employee. Similarly, we, the library's administrative assistant in in one of our most difficult years in twenty eleven through twenty thirteen, we reduced that administrative assistant to nineteen and a half hours, and it really of a budget and a department with its own building of that size really needs a full-time administrative assistant. So there is a recommendation of an increase in hours there. And then our Park and Recreation Department and Commission have proposed the addition of some summer programming with the for an amount of thirty-four thousand dollars, but which they believe not only will provide additional services for Needham's children who very much want to use the outdoor spaces on the pole, but it also is a revenue generator, which we have incorporated into our revenue forecast. So not everything is recommended. There are a number of items here. I'll run through them really briefly that we believe are worthy, but are just really mindful of the available revenue and trying to keep and trying to keep our recommendation to you as concise as possible. There are a number of items in the Department of Public Works that we will be talking to you about over the next several years. There's some intern that we program that we might be putting, putting forward to you for the next year. There's some library items. There's the additional outdoor facility specialist. So about half of the performance budget requests were recommended in this budget. And but it's actually fewer if you look at just headcount increases. So with respect to the need in public schools, it's been our practice that unless there's simply not enough revenue, our practice is to accept the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and the school committee. And there are often changes made by before this period in town meeting involving all the boards. So we are fortunate that, you know, even if we're only two years out from the pandemic, that we, we believe for a variety of factors that we are able to fund the entire recommendation. We noted on the prior screen, the enrollment is flat, generally speaking, and is expected to be flat next year. The superintendent's budget request submitted is 24.82 FTEs. So that is a significant number that impacted that 627,000. Again, a lot of the recommendations that you're, you're going to be seeing in the capital plan and the operating budget in the school budget and in building maintenance result in the need to change the way that we provide ventilation and air exchanges and have really taken a closer look at the way we provide these HVAC services in our buildings. And there's a cost associated with that. There's not a lot in the enterprise fund budget recommendations noting on both sewer and water that the MWR assessments are not final. So we are held them flat. So the budgets are generally flat in water and sewer, but it, we do expect increases in both of those. And we will have those, they're generally available at the time of the printing of the warrant. And then Nipte's costs continue to be a regulatory cost that will continue for us for a long time. There's operating that's essentially, we've been putting in the warrant article and will show you. And then there's also from time to time, a capital request associated with Nipte's. And the Nipte's requirement is on the town, but it's also on all big developments. So this is something that the private sector is having to deal with as well. So in addition to the departmental budgets, there are funds and other transfers that we're making recommendations for. You'll recall that we budget in the sewer budget, the staff associated with the drains. Drains is not technically allowed to be charged to the enterprise fund budget. So the general fund will contribute approximately 587,928 to the sewer budget to, to account for the fact that, you know, our staff, we don't have, you know, dedicated three people for drains. We have a portion of, you know, many people. So this is an accounting method for us. The athletic facility improvement fund, this is the default number that we start with. We have conversations about whether there should be additional funds going in there when we get free cash that's higher than we were expecting. But what we have done in the past is as a basis, basic amount to put in there is an amount of the five-year average that the park and recreation commission brings in for administrative fees associated with its permitting of fields. We're recommending building up the reserves in our workers' compensation and injury on duty internal funds. The injury on duty fund was just approved by town meeting last May. And these funds allow us to use the residual balances in the operating budget and to add additional appropriations to make sure that we have sufficient reserves to meet our obligations in both of those areas. Employees who are not public safety are covered under workers' comp and then swarm police and fire come under injury on duty. The allowance for abatements and exemptions is for the, under the control of the board of assessors at 2.2 million. And then our compensated absence fund, also to build up to make sure we have sufficient fund for known retirements. And as, as you have seen and probably will be seeing over the next several years, some of our longer serving employees who have the availability of sick leave buyback will be retiring. And all employees are eligible for vacation pay when they retire or relieve service for any reason. So for our financial warrant articles, the facilities maintenance program, this is the standard, it's in there every year. Needham Council for Arts and Culture, this is one that we've put in our budget. It's intended to be a three-year program that matches just about the amount that the mass cultural council provides to our NCAC. And this would allow them to really work towards expanding the grants that they provide for arts and performance programming. And this is something that they talked to the board about and would very much value. And I do know that we aren't able to process the number of grant requests that we get and the grant amounts that we have been able to give out are very small. So given that public arts and culture is clearly a priority of the town and the board, we recommend this amount. Again, it would be for a three-year period. The $100,000 recommended for the diversity, equity and inclusion initiative is to the, with also a multi-year program, likely two years to implement the goals of the board, the select board on this topic, primarily aimed at education and programming and training for community groups, boards, committees and commissions and staff. So we don't have a dedicated budget for this. We know that many of, we're working on a staff level to get this training, but we've also heard from many folks who have either reviewed or signed on to the vision, the new R vision statement have said, we agree with it, but we want to know now what we should do. And we're working to, the new R is working to work, put together ideas for how we could have programming and frameworks for boards and committees to review their work through that equity lens. We talked about the Nipte's permit compliance. This is an annual amount that we include in the, in the, in the budget. The RTS service delivery is a goal of the select board to review the, the service delivery, including whether drop off remains the best option for us. And this is something the board had asked us to look, explore before we are looking at making significant improvements to the facility because investment in the facility is necessary if we're going to continue to keep it as a drop off. But if there was a possibility of going to a curbside model or other model, we really need to know that before we make that investment. We've continued the $50,000 recommendation for the property tax assistance program, which provides small grants for, for seniors and those in need. And the small repair grant program, which has been very successful in allowing seniors and the disabled to make smaller repairs that might help them stay in their homes. And finally, another goal of the select board, the parking study of the downtown and if funds allow Needham Heights. That would allow us to take a look at the parking that we have and evaluate the actual needs in alignment with the work that's being done to improve the infrastructure, the, the desire for more park, more bike lanes, a desire for wider sidewalks, and whether just the general walkability of the town that people are very much enjoying and whether the parking that's there needs to stay there, whether there are options. So this is a study that would, we think should be undertaken before we complete the reconstruction of particularly Ray Plain Avenue from Warren Street to Linden Street. Given the availability of free cash, we have a few recommendations for changing the capital plan, even though the capital plan only came out three weeks ago. This is how our timing works. We do believe we can fund the entire public works infrastructure article, which we had to put some of it into tier two. We have been able to do that in the last number of years and it's, it makes a big difference for us. We had very much been interested in funding the DPW facility feasibility. And this would be the refresh as to whether we should be planning for a total reconstruction of our DPW facilities at 470 Dedham Avenue or whether there's ways, again, as we, as the director said, and as we have said, we've learned from the pandemic that we can operate from multi places within the town. And so are there ways that we could use different public land, other places, other ways? So not having to put everything at 470 and that, that also might be able to allow us to phase in the DPW project. Because that is the way we have it currently planned is a significant cost. And then there was a expansion of the Big Belly Program. And given the, the, the very much interest on the part of the public to, for us to work on creative ways to solve the trash issue, it seemed prudent to expand this program. We also, working with the, the library trustees and the new library director, have recommended the study of the, the space in the library and whether there is a way to reallocate space in order to achieve some of the goals of more study rooms and more areas for teens and youth on the second floor, among other things. So it's hard to believe, but it's, you know, 15 years and libraries have changed. And whether by, you know, modest investment, we could make the library even more usable for the public. And I think we found, it sounds like a broken record, but our, the pandemic has shown how much people value the library. And finally, we weren't able to include it in the original budget, but there's a great need on the part of the Pollard School and the superintendent to improve these locker rooms at the Pollard School. I was assured that the plans that, that are been developed for reconstruction of the, of the Pollard School, these would not be wasted money. And they simply don't fit the size of the, the children we have and their equipment. There wasn't a lot of sports being played when these were built. And I guess that every lacrosse helmet is on the floor and is how it's been described to me. So we're glad about that. And then finally, as I mentioned, we believe that it would be ideal if there's excess free, excess free cash that we might want to invest it in the Emory Grover as a cash contribution, which would allow us to retain our borrowing ability in the future. And I know that's been something that while very supportive of the project, we, you know, we're a little bit concerned about doing it all within the tax levy, although it is certainly possible. It might be prudent at this time, since this article is on the warrant, to be matching CPA, potentially CPA debt and cash or a town debt and cash on that project. Just a reminder that there are other funding that's outside the operating budget here. We are continuing to our COVID-19 direct impacts, health, mental health. We had presentations on those, our technology improvements, our economic development. And we've had a presentation recently, that grant program. We've had many applications and they're due at the end of the month. So we'd be very much interested in bringing to you recommendations on those. And then the water sewer drains infrastructure for the balance of the amount. And our outgoing delegation here with Rocket, the most important mammal in Needham. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Great. Okay. Thank you for that. And thank you to your team for all the work. And it always comes down to the wire. And here we are, we're used to seeing some type of Patriots football. It's always the same time of the year as that last slide. That has been the case in the past couple of years.
I did have the last slide there, but it just was too sad.
It didn't work. It didn't work. So thank you for all of this. I just had just a couple of questions as far as where we are and might not have it in front of you tonight. OPEB and trying to pay that down maybe on an accelerated basis. And then secondly, warrant articles we've had in the past for staff put in warrant articles, which is not the best practice as far as the sport is concerned. And I know, I think we still have maybe one, so I'm just, as we move forward, thinking about, you know, budgeting coming off. And I know you're doing that, but just, it's good to see us get headcount on the town side that we desperately need and have it in the budget for, for reasons we've talked about as far as predictability. And I think they're all good ads. The park ranger especially, and we talked about that. And if it does work, I would like to see if that's something that we do need more help in the future. But to start with one, I think is prudent. So I'll open it up. Oh, yes, please.
So second one first, I, we didn't have a need to do the transfer of the PIO from the warrant article because we did it for two years, but I do feel, and I made a note, Mr. Chair, that maybe in your budget priorities next year, not funding staff for warrant articles is something that you've talked about. And maybe we just put that in the priorities. And the second, actually, we, we just received the very recently, the most updated OPEB actuarial report. And we actually are able to lower the assumed rate of return from six and three quarters to six and a half to match the retirement board. And we're actually looking at lowering it again in the most conservative measure without having to extend the schedule. And I would, I would say we're over 40% in terms of funded ratio right now, which is may sound low, but is one of the highest out there, although there are some outliers that have more. So I, and that report will get posted and we can get you a copy of that.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks for that. Questions and discussion? Dan? Further discussion? Marian?
Kate, I'm just curious. I, I absolutely support allocating dollars for Emory Grover to help sort of pay that down. And I think anything we could do to plan forward on that debt burden is really important. I did wonder, is there any update on the COVID dollars that got allocated? Do we have any more insight to, we had planned to buy all these tests that would be available for town and schools. At the same time, almost in parallel, the governor was proposing that testing was, funding was coming from the state. Do we have any sense of how these things are coming together or not?
I believe they're all in, on the boat from China. So we, I've had more than one conversation with the superintendent about making sure that we don't spend our money if they're coming from the Commonwealth. On the other hand, if we were able to get them four weeks ahead, that might be valuable. So I will get you an update at your next meeting. But so far, nobody, nobody has a test. Okay. And as it turns out, Commonwealth Biden administration and the town of Needham are all buying them from the same place.
Okay.
That's a lot.
It's a lot. Can imagine. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Thank you again, Kate, against your team. And I see Dave Davis and our finance director here. Thank you from the board. Next item on the agenda, town manager report.
I believe I've talked enough this year. I'll let you move on to your board discussion.
Okay, well, seeing that item, are there any committee reports? Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Flag one thing for members of the board and, and members of public that may be watching or, and following this. We have the first public hearing of the housing working group, which Marcus and I both serve on. There's actually 13 members of the group from a number of boards and committees, as well as citizens at large. A lot of good thinking and input, but this is a listening session to, as an initial part of its process to developing a townwide report and recommendations to submit to the, the planning board. Now, this is about zoning, which was a pretty hot, gets to be a pretty hot topic around here sometimes. And then at other times, well, things get quieter and we don't hear so much. The committee has had a some, has had some input during the three months that it's been meeting, but not as, there's not been as much public attendance at its meetings and so on, as one might have expected. Zoning in the abstract is, is perhaps a kind of a dry and dull sounding topic. But what we're talking about here is trying to address the idea of planning for the future of the town in such a way that it, we are able to have a broad range of incomes and accommodate a different, a range of, address the fact that the town is becoming integrated and to maintain and to not become economically stratified and to have it be a welcoming committee, community that a lot of different kinds of people can live in together and productively. And there's a lot that, when you get down into talking about zoning, you're talking about a lot of specifics. You're talking about changes of different types of housing that we might have, whether multifamily apartments, accessory dwelling units, whether there's something that can be done to remove, to reduce the number of teardowns in town that are hard, that many of the neighborhoods find really worrisome and disruptive without harming people's property values. We're talking about how much development is going to be involved if new housing, additional multifamily housing zoning is allowed. Size, density, traffic, caught managing costs, impacts on school enrollment and construction, ultimately town financials and taxes. There, once you start talking about this and you get into the specifics, there's going to be a lot of interest. And if the, if members of the community want to have a say, they should follow this process early and stay with it as it goes forward rather than end up with some, you know, five pages of single spaced print showing up in a town warrant and have people saying, well, what it, where'd this come from? Because ultimately this is about neighborhoods and community. Everybody wants things to be better, but nobody likes change. So somehow we had to work our way through this process. The more people are able to, to be aware, to have their say. Not everybody is going to agree, but hopefully we can come up with some things that will be an improvement. This is Thursday night, 7:00 PM. It's a Zoom hearing, housing working group. The notice is on the town website and I hope to see some of you folks there. Thank you.
Dan, thank you for that plug. And thanks for your work and Marcus's work. It is heavy, heavy lifting. I remember the large study committee which Mary Ann was on, how long that took just to get that one issue resolved. So thank you. Mary Ann?
I just wanted to speak briefly, Mr. Chair. The transportation planning and review committee did have its first organizational meeting. So that group has kicked off and set a work schedule and is excited to be getting going. I know that many people in the community have looked forward to the kickoff of the climate action planning committee. That committee we have still not appointed. So I did just want to update to say the appointments have not been made yet. I'm still looking for a couple of skills. And so I've continued outreach in a variety of ways as I'm looking for those skills so that we have really a full set of people to consider for that work so that we can best do it for the town. So I'm hoping to wrap that up soon and bring recommendations to you, but it is still underway.
Great. Thank you for that. Yes.
I should also say, I, I'm going to plan to work with Miles Tucker, who has been my comrade here through all this appointment process. I think it will be probably effective if we could bring you a report of how that appointment process has gone. I think people from the community ask what happens, but just so that people know, over the months of November and December, the process was delayed this year. There were some 30 interviews, I think a little bit more than that actually, that were conducted with citizens in the town who had volunteered for openings that we have on committees, trying to make those appointments, working with various committee chairs, determining what skills people were missing, understanding who was continuing in their service, all those things. So we will bring you a better look at that and continue to roll some things forward next year.
Great. Thank you, Mary Ann. I know the, the process can be tedious and it really ebbs and flows. I think when I was vice chair, the number of requests for appointer applications wasn't that high. And then I know this year it has been, like you said, quite a bit. And we are forming new committees. So that always adds to the caseload and work. So thank you for that. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Marcus?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Kevin?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The motion passes. Good evening, everybody.